Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of October 26, 2017. We will start off with a report out from our closed session.
In absence of the city attorney, I'll report out that the council held two closed-session items. One held was item pending litigation with the SFPP. Second one was a real property negotiator for SPRR easement, and council deliberated and provided direction to staff.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay. With that, I would like to pull item A from the consent calendar. There's a correction that needs to be made with respect to the closed session report out, and our city attorney would like to review the language.
Do you want to remove that permanently until next?
He's gonna, he asked if we could have it on the next reg-
Okay, with that, my motion is with that amendment.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oral communications, number one. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no hands. Move on to the consent calendar. We have items B through F.
Move adoption of items B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
One question, one edit that I had was, let's see, I had some edits to the city council minutes of October 10th. Hold those up. It was just a clerical change, said it was a closed session, and it's not. So the city clerk will make that change. So with that change, we have a motion to approve consent calendars, item B through F. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, swearing in new commissioners and committee members. This is always a fun thing to do. Item A, administer oath of office to newly appointed commissioners and committee members. So how would we like to do this? We have all of them. Would we like them all to come up at this time?
Absolutely.
So we'd like to call up Sharon Boggs, David Needham, Pamela Saison, Arthur Sun, and Patrick Tinter. Congratulations.
Let's say which ones, what they're for.
Sure. So we have Sharon Boggs and David Needham being appointed to Parks and Recreation Commission, term through January 2020. Pamela Saison being appointed to the Planning Commissioner with a term through January 2020. And Arthur Sun and Patrick Tinter being appointed to Complete Street Safety Committee with a term through January 2020.
Good evening. My name is Ingrid Padilla. I'm your city clerk. Now going to administer the oath or affirmation of allegiance for public officers and employees. This is the, as execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you all for your willingness to serve our community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for willing to serve.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
The "without reservation" part always gets me because if you don't have reservations, I'm not sure.
Especially when you get on the council.
All right. Moving on to new business. Item A, receive report on capital improvement projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I'm going to start off the presentation this evening, and Public Works Department, Randy Bro and Karen Kinzner will also participate in the presentation. And as always, Stuart is here with regards to the financial issues relative to the capital So the first, what the, just the definition of what a capital improvement plan is, a CI, we often call it a CIP, but it's a capital improvement plan. The capital improvement projects of the city, and we will get to that definition and those, the list of those, make up the capital improvement plan. So what is the plan? What we're asking you tonight to do is to review what is presented to you in terms of projects in the capital improvement plan. It's not a final approval of any of those projects. As you know, those projects will come, most of those projects will come back to you at least two more times. One with the project plans and specifications that the council will always approve before its, a project is put out to bid. And then finally, when a bid is approved, the council takes that action. So what you're looking at tonight is really kind of what I consider more the blueprint of our capital improvement planning for the city. So capital improvement projects. One of the characteristics of capital improvement projects is that they are, they tend to be multi-year expenditures to build new infrastructure. Infrastructure is kind of a government wonkish term. It basically is all of our physical assets of a community, our parks, our water system, our sewer system, in our case, a marina, all the kind of physical assets that are owned by the public and for which the city is a steward of. There tend to be multi-year expenditures to maintain and replace existing infrastructure. Significant costs are involved, which could adversely impact annual operating budgets. As you recall, we spent a significant amount of money out of the marina the last few years. In part, that was to deal with infrastructure that was aging, and that really has a long-term value to the operation of the marina in terms of not having the kind of the annual costs that you might have if you were not doing your, your capital spending. But capital spending can actually save you money over time. Difference between a capital improvement budget and an operating budget. Operating budget is our annual expenditures based on programs and services that we provide, everything from our public safety, police and fire services, to our city administration and city clerk services, to finance and public works, and everything that kind of goes into the day-to-day operation of the, of the city. Includes ongoing staffing, contracts, supplies, support expenditures to accomplish council and community goals. We pay for existing liabilities out of our operating budget. That includes our bonded debt, which usually goes to pay for capital improvement projects. We'll get into that a little bit more later. Our unfunded retirement and post-retirement costs, replacing existing equipment, things of that nature. So the city budgeting process, as the council recalls, we adopted in 2016, we made our second effort at a two-year budget. We had done one about a dozen years or so ago, and then got away from it when the recession hit. But we adopted a two-year budget in 2016 that goes through 2018. And part of that process, we said that each off-year of that, which 2017 would be, we would take a deeper dive into our capital planning process and our capital planning budget. So that's the purpose of, of tonight, is to take that little bit deeper dive and put more emphasis on the capital planning process. It usually, in the past, had always been part of the budget review, and it was kind of at the end of the budget review, and everybody was kind of worn down and tired from the, looking at all the operating budgets and looking at the five-year forecasts and things of that nature. And we really didn't have a chance to spend as much time on the capital planning piece as, as I think we all wanted to. We will be back to you next spring with the next two-year budget, which will be 2018 through 2020 fiscal two years. As I said, the CIP is reviewed in whole every two years. This is kind of a new process for us, so we will be doing this again in 2019, 2021. We last had a full review in 2006 before the Great Recession. We didn't really look at the plan in great detail through that period of time, primarily because we were focused on dealing with the operating budget and basically trying to just stay afloat during those very difficult years. In 2012, the city council, through our regular budgeting process, started to catch up on a number of capital projects, some more of the smaller projects. Some are listed in your package tonight. Some of them were kind of more of emergency sorts of projects that we did during that period of time, but I believe that first year, we spent over a million dollars on small capital projects, just trying to catch up. So how's the CIP or the Capital Improvement Program developed? Through a variety of ways. Projects are added to the list through the following methods. We do master plans for our water system, our sewer system, our storm drains. We just did one in 2017, and that was reviewed by your infrastructure subcommittee. We did one on the storm drain master plan in 2003, so you can see that probably is going to need to be updated fairly soon. Other infrastructure plans are facility condition report, as council recalls, you approved a contract to hire a consultant to work with staff to do that. And then we have our street pavement condition index, which is an ongoing analysis of our street conditions that is updated annually. Other methods in which CIP projects can come forward is through the city council itself. Their council members or the council as a whole have identified projects over time. City commissions and committees, particularly your Parks and Rec Commission, I think have been fairly active in this area. Members of the community may come forward with projects. And then city staff is obviously looking at the various needs, basically through the eyes of the ongoing day-to-day operations of the city and seeing what kinds of things we think need to be addressed. So sources of funding for capital improvements. We passed in 2008 what I would call a fairly innovative business license tax, and that starts, started to generate money. I think now it generates close to $400,000 a year in that neighborhood. We did make a decision, the council made a decision back when you were looking at the development of library to dedicate the business license tax for the library project, so that will pay off loans or other kinds of borrowing for the library. Gas tax, Measure A funds, those all are dedicated by law through to street projects, basically the street maintenance projects that you approve each year that come before you. The water and sewer capital charge, again, a kind of innovative fee that we developed in 2014 and sold $5 million worth of bonds to start doing some of the water and sewer projects that are identified in the water and sewer master plans. The marina is self-funded through an enterprise fund, basically the fees and the slip rates that the voters pay. When there is development-led or development-focused projects in years gone by, the Northeast Ridge, certainly going into the future, the, the balance that if you have development that is actually driving the need for certain kinds of projects, for example, a new water tank, or if you were to have a situation where you needed a new fire station based on development, that would be paid for through that kind of a payment. Grants, we are always looking for opportunities in, in the area of grants. Earlier this year, as you know, through, through CKAG and Councilmember Lentz's leadership, we were able to get a fairly significant grant to, for our trail system through Crocker Park. So those are, help offset certain types of projects. And then the final area, which is the general fund. We do not, at this time, have not, and I think probably, I would suggest probably going into the future, will not be identifying general fund per se as a funding source for capital projects. The general fund has many other demands on it. That does not mean that certain projects may not be funded by the general fund if the council chooses to do that, but I don't think that the opportunity to carve out a certain amount of general fund dollars on an annual basis is really going to be prevalent going, going future. When you go through the plan itself, you'll see general fund listed. Another way of looking at that is that that means that there are no funds identified. The only funds we have the potential of using for those projects is the general fund, and again, that's a case-by-case, project-by-project basis that the council will need to evaluate. So our current capital improvement plan that we're presenting to you tonight, we have 97 projects. About 30 million of those are developer-driven, and that also speaks to the timing of those projects. They're not needed until that kind of, the development would, would happen. The water and sewer program has $19.5 million. 18 million are identified in the general fund. Again, a little bit of a misnomer, basically what we're saying is those are not funded. There aren't, is not an identified funding source. 6 million from the business license, which has been dedicated to the library project. We have about 2.7 million in grants, $775,000 in marina fees, and an ongoing $300,000 a year in gas tax Measure A, which goes to our, our streets. So steps going forward. The continuation, the kind of the key issues I would suggest to you tonight are the continued implementation, not implantation, of a capital charge for water and sewer. Back in 2014, the council implemented this program and said that every five years, you would increase the fee for a new increment that would be able to be used for an additional $5 million worth of, of funding on each increment, each five-year increment. If you do that four times and get to the 20 years, then you start retiring your bonds and being able to use the money that you had been paying for retired bonds for new bonds, and so that it will kind of even out. So the next 20 years are going to be painful, and then from that point forward, you have kind of a built-in funding system. We started that in 2014, and as we indicated, after the fourth cycle, ongoing source for revenue of projects. As we've indicated, we've updated some of our master plans this year, the water and sewer, and I would just put, put it out there that, you know, that's something that the city needs to be committed to. There was a time, not that long ago, when we had no master plans on our water and sewer systems or storm drain systems, and without having that kind of roadmap of what your need to do, you're really kind of floundering in terms of what your demands are, what your needs are going into the future, and it's very hard to get out in front of things. I think also by the master planning process, we've actually have reduced some of the costs because we've been able to kind of take a fresh look at some of the, the issues, and I know the public works staff, Randy can probably speak to that a little better than I can, but I think that process really does kind of give you the opportunity to do some critical thinking in terms of your systems. The last item, which is a much more problematic and difficult one, but is to identify potential funding sources for the unfunded capital needs, to the extent the council wants to do, go forward with those programs. We've identified about 18 million. While this seems daunting, I would say that, you know, in the last dozen years or so, we did come up with the idea of the business license tax that is now going to support the library as one, one method. We came up with the sewer and water system charge, and we had, as council remembers, many meetings over that issue, a lot of subcommittee meetings over that issue, but that helped pay for the water and sewer system. And of course, in the marina, which is a little bit different because it's a dedicated funding source, but we were able to put together a program there. So while this is challenging and difficult and always a little bit painful, I think we can be creative and try to find some potential sources of, of funding.
Clay, just ask you a quick question on that. Maybe this is Stuart or Randy, but that 18 million that's unfunded, is there a big portion of that that's storm drain related?
Yes.
And how, how much is that?
I don't know. We'll, we'll get you that number, but that is correct. A big number of that is, is a storm drain program.
That's one we don't have funded at all, so.
That's the one, and it's fair to say that nobody has that funded, to speak of, and that's obviously an issue that's bigger than Brisbane.
It's a statewide issue.
It is, it is. Although, as Randy and I've talked over the years, you know, I can tell you that, you know, having lived in Oregon, and I know, Terry, you lived in Oregon, Oregon had a system for raising funds for storm drains going back 35 years ago. And it was basically pretty close to what you see for water and sewer utilities. That may not work in California, but you know, it's, there are systems out there in other states that have been able to figure out this, this issue.
And if I may add on to that, one of the good news on the horizon for that is this year, the California Assembly in the Senate and the governor then signed SB 231 by Mr. Hertzberg, and what that did was it included storm drain specifically in the definition of sewer, as that was discussed in Proposition 218. It's good on the one hand. I don't think we want to be the first ones to try that, because I suspect that certainly there are going to be certain taxpayer groups out there that are going to try and protest that, but I would expect that within the next year or two, you're going to see a couple of cities try and put forth a storm drain fund and try and do both the infrastructure for the storm drain itself and tie in the water quality because of all of the requirements we have under the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So I see some, some hope on the horizon.
Yeah, so that'd be a parcel tax, Randy.
That's one of the terms it could take, or it could go down that path.
Okay.
So it's, the number is 11.3 million out of the 18 million?
Yeah. I knew it was significant.
Say that again?
11.3 of the 18 million is storm drain related.
So, so Clay, you know, you talked about the library and using the business license tax. You know, I mean, after a certain amount of years, we will have paid off-
Correct.
-that, that amount, and if it's the council's pleasure, I mean, we could use that $400,000 to look at other capital improvement.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we are, just so that we've all got perspective on it, we're probably talking 15 years or so. But yeah, in the future, that, that will get paid off and those dollars, some future city council will be very thankful because they'll have a pot of money to work with.
And then, you know, we have these two measures that are on the ballot. You know, what impacts do they have potentially if they pass?
Well, the, the-
The general fund.
The one having to do with recycling is, basically supports the general fund operating, so it has nothing to do with the, the capital program, but it's very important in terms of the ongoing day-to-day operations of the city. The, the second one, the soils processing one, is probably a little more problematic because that business right now is, is not operating, so the amount of revenue is probably going to be fairly minimal for the foreseeable future. However, down the line, as that area changes, it could very well generate a significant amount of money.
Okay, thanks.
Questions for staff?
I, I do. Well, actually, I got one for council. Is, on here, there's a couple, couple projects that I'd like to see added for, for this coming, this coming year. Would I consider low-hanging, palatable fruit, you know, that it's cheap?
Sure.
Cheaper than anything, so. And this is more pedestrian-related. One would be the, this would be on page five of your packet, of the description of the projects.
Clark, if I may, or, or, you have more of a presentation than-
I've got a little bit more dog and pony for you if you'd like.
Yeah, and I just want questions. Finish the presentation, and then I'd like to have questions asked before we get into-
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't have any questions about what you said so far.
I'm going to turn it over to the public works staff, and they're going to walk you through the projects we've done, as well as some highlights of what we're looking at in the future.
Okay.
So we're, we're still not following along on any of our sheets. We're still getting a general overview.
So the next item that- So the next item that Karen's going to cover in her status as the Deputy Public Works Director and the person who's really responsible overall for our CIP program is in your staff report. It's behind the staff report. It's listed status of mini-CIP projects. It's a vertical sort of table. It's got some green annotations in it.
Thank you. So this table is a list of the recent and current CIP projects and a new designation that we established, mini-CIP projects for the, the smaller ones, but, and unique, that happened once over time. And I just wanted to highlight a few on this list. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer questions.
So, so the green, just so I can follow along on the list, the green items marked in with a green highlight, those are the items that have been completed and are funded and off our charts?
Yeah. Everything on the list is funded in the past, either capital improvement cycle or in the operating budget as mini-CIPs that were one-time projects, and the green are the ones that are complete. And the column within the notes is, is basically the status of the other projects. This is our internal document that helps us track where we are with regard to each of these projects.
Okay, thank you.
So, well, we fund each year vegetation management of the Brisbane Acres, but I wanted to just talk about this a little bit. This is a map that our consultant contractor put together, and these are the acres that the city owns and where our vegetation management efforts occur. This next slide is their GPS tracking for each person and each day that, when they go out and they do their removals, they're removing broom, fennel, and they're working on respouts of trees, eucalyptus, pine trees, cotonyaster, and it just kind of fits well with the areas and how they focused. And this was last year's track log because they just gave us their presentation yesterday on, on this summer's work. An example of what they do is we focused on scrub management. We took a trial area up above Margaret Tank, and these are two different views, but the left is before and the right is after, and we're trying to see if we can spend a little bit of the money and, and get areas back to grassland section by section. So that's just a visual of that. And this year, you also funded, or this last year, you also funded us removing trees. We removed trees on the new lot 79 that was acquired, the eucalyptus, and we removed Monterey pines on the- And we removed Monterey pines on the lots above Harold Road that we own. What I also forgot to put a picture in of was Firth Park restoration. But hopefully everyone's seen it because it's, it's in town and a lot more visible. So the contractor removed all the ivy and put in a jute netting to, for erosion control. And we are going to come back later in the winter and do some more planting there to try to prevent ivy from coming back. And in the future, we're hoping that'll be an area that volunteers will help maintain in the state that it's, that it's now in. We also, the council funded re-sodding project of the dog park, probably maybe a lot of you have seen that. The sod just went in last week. And this is a picture of, of how, how it looks at this point. The sod needs to establish, so the dog park's going to be closed until December 11th to persons and, and dogs at that point.
Can I, can I ask you something about this real quick?
Sure.
So with this project, there, nothing has been done in terms of lighting, right? Just all focused on re-sodding to enhance the space. So nothing, we haven't budgeted anything for lighting at all in this area, right?
No, that wasn't part of-
I just wanted to make sure because I know that the Park and Rec Commission had discussed that a while back. I just want to make sure before, because we might need to get into that later too.
Yeah, thank you for asking. If you're talking about, I think there was some discussion about a light on the far, on the west end of the dog park.
Yeah, it seemed, there have been complaints that the, the west end can get really dark at night. So we can talk about that when we talk about projects to be added. But I just didn't know what the status of the lighting was currently and if that's been improved. Because that was something I, we talked about when I was on Park and Rec Commission.
Right.
And I hadn't followed the status particularly on the lighting as much as I had on like making sure we got it re-sodded because that was a primary issue.
Right, priority.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there would, there would be a cost, and I think we did estimate that to put in a street light. Staff was going to look into whether the existing utility pole on that end, whether we could add a light, and that would be a simpler project, so we will do that.
Okay. Do you know how much, is that something that we would need to go ahead and put on this, these plans? Or is that a small enough budget that you could just-
That one is actually number PR 3, page 87, and $10,000 is what the estimate is.
Got it, thank you.
We also installed the last series of trash capture devices as required by our municipal regional permit in storm drain catch basins. This is an example of one. And what you, at the bottom of leaf and trash debris is a wire mesh. And everything above it that you see is cleaned out at least two, up to three times a year before and during the rainy season. These are a couple of Ice House Hill slope repair that was completed this summer. On the left, anchors are being installed at the top of Ice House Hill to put in the wire mesh drapery that's shown on the right being installed. The Marina dredging, as you probably know, happened in the summer and of 2015 and 2016 because of biological parameters from BCDC. We dredge the channel and then within the seawall and voters were happy. Everyone was happy with this. And last, is the cold in place recycling project on Bay Shore Boulevard. And probably a lot of you saw that, or possibly you-
Heard it.
Went around to not get impacted by the work. On the left shows the cold in place recycling train. And we might have talked about specifics before. We ground three inches of the existing asphalt and did a cold mix on site. So we added asphalt emulsion, water and cement and let that cure instead of having to haul off that failed asphalt. And that was open to traffic. And then we came back and did a two inch asphalt concrete overlay. So we ended up with a much better road surface than if we'd just done a typical pavement repair. And that's, those are the ones I wanted to highlight. I'm happy to answer any other questions about, questions about other projects. Questions?
Karen, you know, we have this whole list of projects here. Are we going to go through those?
Yes, sir, that's, that's me. You get me next. We'll go into that.
Yeah, you know-
Every single one of them?
They kind of overlap each other.
Every single one of the 75 that we're responsible for and painfully-
Okay, because-
No, I'm kidding, man, we're going to do five. There's, I'll give you five as a highlight.
Thank you.
Clay wanted me to do 75. I had to talk him out of it. I said, it just didn't seem prudent. So if there are no questions for Karen's, Karen on the sheet of what we've been tracking and what we've already had funded, I'll move into the, the new proposed projects. As Stu noted, there's something like 97 projects total on this list. And 75 of those fall under the purview of the Department of Public Works, if and when you fund them to go ahead and design and build and get them constructed. So I'm, I'm going to go through them, but as I promised you, I'm only going to go through five. And I'm going to start right at the beginning at, at number two, which is the City Hall Fotovoltaic Design Build. This is a project that we have had in the plans for a long time. A, a slightly different council, well over a decade ago, made a decision that the design of City Hall was going to include keeping the roof clear of HVAC equipment. And that's, so that's why we have the water source heat pump supply system that keeps our heating and cooling and the system out in the parking lot. And so the roof is primarily clear. And we, and then this council, just within the last few months, approved the funds to go ahead and issue the notice inviting bids. I'm happy to say that we had three pretty good contractors show up at the mandatory pre-bid. I'm pretty sure that they are all interested because they've all been peppering me with questions in advance of the bid. We've issued three addendums to it, and we're taking bids next Thursday. So we're really excited about that project. It's going to be a, it's going to be a great demonstration project for the community, and we hope that they get on board with Fotovoltaic as well. So the next project I'd like to talk about is, is on page 41 of your sheets. And this is the lift station condition assessment and hydraulic evaluation. And this speaks somewhat to what Clay was talking about, the need for us to update our water and sewer master plans and how important they are. One of the things we discovered out of our last sewer master plan was that we didn't have as good an understanding as we probably ought to out of our sewage lift stations, really understanding where they are, where they are in their life cycles, their operations, what we're seeing as changing in demands and flows coming through them. And really, the importance of doing this, as Clay mentioned, is it allows us to get good data on the system so that we can make a decision to either rehabilitate, replace, or make some other major change to it. But do it in an organized fashion and do it in a timeline when it's needed, not just say, well, we don't really know, so let's just go out and replace all pumps at the station, spend a lot of money. It allows us to focus on where the problems are with some technical detail to back that up. Following along in that same vein, the next topic I'm going to talk about is on page 43, which is sewer pipeline replacements, and that's called Priority One. I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Would it be appropriate to ask questions while you're going through these items?
I wouldn't mind, go ahead, ma'am.
So on this project, it has a completion date of 2024? Or is that something that's an ongoing, we're starting it now and plan to have the assessment completed by 2024?
So all of those dates are based on the assumption that they're going to be approved for financing by the council in a fashion to get to that date. But really, the dates of completion are based on us looking at when staff thinks the project needs to be done. And then what we would do is bring it to you in a timeframe so that we can get the funds authorized for it. But none of these projects that you see in here are funded right now.
These, these would, the sewer ones would be bonded projects, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
They would.
And I would assume that it'd be, we would be bringing in a larger bond amount than a $200,000 bond for this in particular, that we would want to lump 10 or 12 or whatever projects together and do one single bond or rebond, an existing bond, to be able to, to financially do a number of projects.
It's, it's that $5 million bond we talked about at the beginning. Every five years, do another 5 million, right? So.
See, that's exactly correct, and it's an interesting segue into the next one I was going to go into on page 43 because when you look at that one, the sewer pipeline replacements, Priority One projects, and we've called them Priority One and Priority Two because we've been able to distinguish those two. But that looks at being completed in fiscal year 19. So that would be the beginning of a five-year cycle, and we would have the other one there. The value of this one is that when we first did our sewer master plan back in 2003, one of the things we identified there was that there were some of our sewer mains that we didn't have a good understanding of where they were and what sort of condition they were in. And the consultant who had come in had only been able to do so much of our systems. I think we, we were left with, you know, 30 or 40% of our system that was not CCTVed. And so one of the recommendations that came out, excuse me, was for us to buy our own camera system, for us to go out and have staff then go forth and do all of these assessments and do all of the CCTVing on their time. And as a result of that, again, once more, we have a place where now we have good, solid information. So we're not guessing as we put projects together. We're not waiting for things to break. We've got a sense of we've, we've gone through, we videotaped them, we've categorized the pipelines, their conditions, the conditions of the manholes. And now we have a strong sense of where we need to put the city's money best so that we're spending it as wisely as we can.
Thank you.
The next project I'd like to talk about is interesting. This is on page 49, we're transitioning over to a street project. This is intersection improvements at Bay Shore and San Bruno. Some of you will recall that, geez, many years ago now, okay, here, I have it listed in here, it's 2005. You'll recall that San Bruno used to come down to Bay Shore at a skew. And it was kind of like joining the freeway on ramp. People would come down and kind of hit the stop sign at a high speed roll and kind of look back over their shoulder. And we were having multiple vehicular accidents every year as a result of that. So we had Kim Lee Horn come out and help us design a series of phased improvements. And the first one is, is what you've got now, where we've, we've changed the configuration of that stop so that when people come to Bay Shore, they unfortunately have to stop. And, but now they are stopped at a 90 degree angle to the roadway, and that allows them to look both to the left and the right and to really find a time when it's actually safe to cross that road. This phase here would be the next transition in that. This phase would allow us to install an acceleration lane in both directions on Bay Shore. So in other words, if you were traveling to the south, it would create a lane that's parallel along the frontage where the gas company used to operate there so that you could come to a stop, but then you could turn your vehicle into this acceleration lane and get up to speed and join traffic. So it's very much, if you think about in front of the Bay Shore Technology Park, if you're coming from like Seven Mile House and before you get to Guadalupe Canyon, there's an Excel and D-Sale lane to go into their parking lot and to come out of their parking lot. So it would be that sort of scenario. And back at Bay Shore and San Bruno, we would also have the acceleration lane northbound. So we would reconfigure those lanes. So what it would do is when you had a clear spot, say if you've got no traffic coming at you from the south, but you do have northbound traffic, it would allow you to go across the southbound lanes and get into a protected acceleration lane so that you could then be able to accelerate. Because right now, the default is you have to stop and wait till it's clear in both directions. And we understand that that's very challenging.
And that's where we had the fatal accident last year.
Right, that is where we had the fatality last year. That's absolutely correct.
So would that solve any of the issues associated with that accident?
So my understanding of that accident is that the driver was under the influence. And so I don't think that would have cured that.
And the cost is $323,000?
Yes, ma'am.
That seems high for creating lane-
Well, it's a lot of real estate is, is the problem. It's several hundred feet.
Some of it's privately owned?
No, 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 it's just the, the reality of creating an acceleration lane and getting a vehicle from zero to 45. So that takes several hundred feet to get, to get you to speed.
My point was if we had that lane, that accident probably wouldn't have happened, whether the person was under the influence or not, because the person would have been able to get into the acceleration lane and, and head north. So, yeah.
Is the acceleration lane heading south something that is necessary?
It makes sense, yeah, absolutely it does, yeah. A lot of people complained about this intersection for years. So, yeah, I think these are great improvements, Randy.
It's, it's, it's one way to help assist the situation.
So this is better than just having a stoplight?
Probably about a third of the cost of having a stoplight.
Do you think it would be safer to have a stoplight?
You know, that's a really interesting question to ask. So if, if you have a stoplight and we presume that people stop at stoplights, which isn't always the case, there's some possibility that that would be better. I think that what people would find though, is that folks using San Bruno Avenue would find that they have a longer wait.
You get more stacking.
It would stack you-
What about a stop sign?
Well, there is a stop sign there, ma'am.
I mean, a stop sign on Bay Shore.
Ooh, no, I don't think I'd put a stop sign on Bay Shore. The rest of it's signalized, it's a pretty high speed road. I don't think I would do that. And you would end up with the same sort of issue because you're still, you've got the queuing on San Bruno. And, and I think initially, some of the challenge we would have too, just be, you know, the backside of San Bruno is a pretty narrow, pretty tight road. And as, I think when we put it in initially, I would be very concerned about putting in some sort of advanced warning so that drivers coming down the hill understood very clearly that the light was stopped because otherwise they're going to come barreling down there and we're going to have rear end collisions, which is something to avoid as well. And I think preferentially, you know, honestly, the intersection that works better is Old County and Bay Shore. I know some people don't want to go down that way because it feels intuitively in reverse to them. They're like, well, I want to go south, and I kind of live on the south end of town, so I want to go here. But really, if you get down to Old County and Bay Shore, it's got, it's got that free right-hand lane. If there's no traffic coming, the stacking is not too bad along there, it's flat. You can see cars, that's certainly a much safer intersection to do this at.
The other problem-
I think the Excel lanes would, I think the Excel lanes are probably the better solution.
The other problem with, with cars that are stacking up going, you know, coming down to Bay Shore on San Bruno is that if it stacks up and people, instead of just a straight rear end accident where most of the time they are not as severe, people will make the decision if they are in a choice of rear ending the car in front of them or not, they will swerve into oncoming traffic. And that's where the, the-
Get a bad head on.
More critical accidents happen.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think this is a good first step solution.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. So, well, we love all our projects, sir, and we love them all equally as we submit them to you. We, we, we let you pick of the favorites as we go through. So the last project I want to talk about-
If, if I may-
Sure, of course, yes, sir.
Randy, and this is also for you too, Chief Macias, did you also look at just not allowing a left turn on San Bruno onto Bay Shore? I mean, that, that seems to be the, where the danger is, is trying to get over. You know, I'm sure folks taking San Bruno to make the left turn might not like it. But then you think about it, if you're making that left turn, you know, you could go down to Old County Road and, and get over. I mean, really, the only advantage I, I see making that left turn instead of going all the way down to Old County is you want to go to the old BWR site. So, I mean, is that something that you, that you talked about?
I think I've covered this with the infrastructure subcommittee, that what we, the proposal was not to restrict left turns at all times, but one of the things that we talked about as a possibility was restricting it during specific hours, which would be during rush hour. So not all day long, but just during rush hour.
Because, you know, the left turn is, is what causes the backup.
Yep.
Because they're waiting. And of course, right now, you got to wait for both sides. Okay, having this, this kind of safe zone in between helps that with the southbound traffic because you're not going to be moving across if the southbound is there. But then you can't continue to move over if it's the northbound. But here, at least, you, you can now cross to the middle.
Merge, yeah.
Right, while there's still northbound traffic coming down. I think that'd also present some risks as well. I mean, you're on Highway 101, say, going to Monterey. How they kind of deal with getting in and out. You know, so the infrastructure subcommittee, what, what did you guys, you know, what, what was your kind of discussion on not allowing a, a left turn?
It's, it's been a few months since we talked about it, so I would-
I don't know, I don't remember even talking about this. Matter of fact, I wouldn't recommend eliminating a turn at all. I, I think this is a good step, what, what-
Right.
The city engineer is proposing. You know, yeah, we had one fatal accident there last year, but, you know, it was due to circumstances of an impaired driver and the car going out and waiting for the northbound traffic. If that acceleration lane would have been there, that person would have been in that acceleration lane. And that's really it. That's what the issue was. And, and so I think I, I wouldn't suggest eliminating it because you create more problems.
We did look at that and, and what problems it would create. And by eliminating the left turn lane, whether it was just in certain hours and/or completely, and it would force anyone coming out that road to only be headed southbound. There's no good place for them to get going the other direction.
You can't even make a U-turn all the way down at, I believe, once you get all the way down at the light when you get on the freeway. I don't think you can even make a U-turn there.
You can make a right into the Centennial.
Towers and turn around in private property, but I don't think that's really-
I think most people end up having to cross over Oyster Point- I think most people end up having to cross over Oyster Point Boulevard to get back on one-on-one. That's where you can make a legal kind of come around.
That would be the first place you could legally go the other direction and.
It's just kind of a ways away.
It's quite a ways, it's a lot of traffic.
You know, it would be one of those things where you get to San Bruno and Bay Shore and you go, damn, I forgot, I can't make a left turn anymore. And I'll have to remember that if I wanna go north, I just go to Old County. Or if I wanna get to Tunnel, or, you know, I mean, eventually, that's what you would do. And you think about it, making a left turn on San Bruno or going down to Old County, how much time does that really save you, depending upon where you are in town? It's probably like less than a minute. But it would actually be, you know, so much safer for, you know, all drivers and bicyclists.
One of the things we talked about with that was the shuttle route. And they use it, and we did, so, and it has been quite a while since we talked about it. So, I really wouldn't wanna bring back too many of the back-and-forth we had about the safety at that intersection.
It's been so long, I forgot, I really don't remember.
Yeah, I know, you bring up a good point, Terry, about the shuttle bus. Because it does come up, you know, it comes up to San Bruno, and then where is it gonna go? Right, you can't really make, it's gonna have to go down.
We talked about reversing the shuttle path, actually, and having the shuttle run the opposite direction.
So, should we bring this back?
That part I remember, yeah. But that wouldn't really work, because it was, yeah.
It didn't really work, and then it changed where the stops would be, it put the stops at more risk for having pedestrian and other issues at the top of Thomas. So, we did look at it, and this was the best solution that we had thought about for that area.
Yeah, you know, when you take into account the shuttle, then that changes it, right? Because there isn't any way to really make the turn off of San Bruno for that shuttle. Either going west, you know, or making some kinda weird U-turn on Talarri, or, yeah. That's the only way you can, that's the only place where the shuttle can go, is just down to Bay Shore and then make the left and go to the train station or to the Balboa Bar station.
Sure, but in San Francisco, you know, they have lanes that say like no right turn or no left turn.
Buses only.
Buses only. So, you could make an exception for, you know, public transportation. I like the idea. I think, you know, it probably would just eliminate the risk of accidents at the lowest cost, because this would be a lot more expensive. But we'd have to flesh it out certainly a lot.
Yeah, I'd love for you guys to flesh that out a little bit more, since it's been a while. Because, you know, constituents have talked to us about the dangers of that intersection in not making a left turn there. And so, yeah, like.
Well, to come back to the Subcommittee, I'm certainly.
Well, I mean, I'm hearing.
I mean, do you want?
To me, we flushed it out.
I think we did flush it out.
Yeah, but I mean, you never really brought it back to the council. Maybe you flushed it out amongst yourselves, but, you know, I think that's important.
Well, I'm good with what the Subcommittee, I mean, I'm good with this plan. I still, like, I would still like to have the ability to make a left-hand turn there if it was my choice. I, after that accident, I haven't. I've decided to never make that left-hand turn again after that, my personal choice. And I go down to Old County. But, you know, I think that there are some people who would like to make that choice to turn left. And with these lanes, it sounds like it would be safer. So, I think it should be up to people to, you know, decide which intersection they'd like to use, which one they feel more comfortable. I do think that this makes things a lot more safe. And I still think if you made no left-hand turn except for buses, you'd still want for a shuttle to put in those extra lanes anyway.
The, you know, that zone.
So, you would still be spending this.
That's important, absolutely, I think.
You would still be spending this money. So, it wouldn't really, it wouldn't really cut down the cost. You just add an extra sign there that would say like buses only or during a certain hours.
You know, well, you know, exactly. You know, I mean, what, sometimes you're dealing with one thing and it brings up, you know, something else, which is the safety of the site.
I will say that we also looked at, in the Subcommittee, when they were talking about the VWR site and the future uses and the amount of trucks going in and out of that area about signaling that Bay Shore Boulevard, or San Bruno and Bay Shore. And I believe it was the traffic engineers thought that that was also gonna be very problematic because of the closeness to the other signalized light and that that would create another set of issues. And so, that was sort of ruled out as one of the options or one of the conditions of approval of VWR was to signalize the adjacent, the next signal down. And so, we sorta looked at that also when we looked at that project, I believe.
And in terms of cost, I mean, you're still going to need to spend this money to make those lanes. I think it's even scarier to think of a shuttle bus trying to do this filled with people, and it's way bigger. And it probably can't accelerate as fast as a small car. That's even more dangerous for them to make a left-hand turn without having that additional lane for them to accelerate in. So, you're really not saving any money.
So, if I might throw in just a little bit of, you know, engineering perspective on it. I think there are always two perspectives we're looking at. One is, are you trying to make things safer? And one is, are you trying to meet the demands of the public? And you have to find a balance there. So, I would suggest that, I think part of what we had, the conversation we had at the Subcommittee, is that the public doesn't wanna be restricted from making a left-hand turn there. What the public's demand is that we wanna get through that intersection faster, and we're being tied up because of people trying to make left-hand turns. So, the creation of these acceleration lanes that include a safe place in northbound Bay Shore for a vehicle to come out of San Bruno when the southbound traffic allows them to and gets in, meets both of those. And I would just be a little concerned about putting in the no-left turn for a couple of reasons. One, because I think we would have negative public response to that. And even more importantly than the response we all have to deal with is that when people feel like they should not be restricted from doing something like that, they make the movement anyway. And if you've got vehicular traffic coming from opposite directions that know there's a restriction there to make the left, they expect cars to not make the left, and that's when we end up with accidents again.
Yeah, no, no.
Or road rage.
All right, I'm good with it.
We'll move on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, the very last project, I told you I was only gonna do five, we're doing five. This is on page fifty-nine, this is the PRV Construction and Fire Main on Anis Lane. This is, this one came out of our two thousand and three Water Master Plan. We revalidated it in the last master plan update we did just a few years ago. Actually, came up with some cost savings idea, although, as you can see, it's still an expensive project. We've had a number of community outreaches on this. We have, our next one is Saturday morning at Firth Park. We'll be there again from nine to eleven. We've got boards and we're talking to the public. But I'll tell you what, this is the most important public safety project we have done in two decades. This is the project that's gonna give us fire flow and pressures we need to put out fires at our urban wildland interface in the upper part of central Brisbane. And if you think people weren't thankful and thought, that we had been so thoughtful and working on this for so long with the Napa and Sonoma fires going on, you weren't paying attention lately, because that, this is forefront of everybody's mind. And I'm really so glad we're doing this. And Jerry Flanagan, who's not here tonight, has just done a great job with both managing the project and doing the public outreach. So, if you had time on Saturday, good time to come by. We do provide coffee and donuts, and it's a good time to meet your constituents and talk with them too, because we had a couple dozen folks show up the last time we did. It was.
And what time is that on Saturday?
Nine to eleven at Firth Park, ma'am. And that's all I have. I'm happy to take questions from the council.
I have one very. I have one very minor question. Where is Bankers Lane?
Bankers Lane is right going into PSI. So, if you're going out Valley towards the fire station, right before you get to the sewage lift station there, that right-hand turn is Bankers Lane.
Okay, so where the teachers' site is?
Uh, no, that's, the building is called PSI.
Okay, I'm.
What side of the road is that on?
It's on, as you are going eastbound on Valley towards Bay Shore, it's on the right-hand side. It's before you get to the entryway we have there. It looks like a driveway, but it's got a name. It's called Bankers Lane.
Okay, I just, that was one of the streets I kept hearing named and, or seeing named and not knowing where it was. So, on these projects, you had.
Wait, Terry, can I hop in there? Because I have a weird street, I don't know either. Alana Way?
You don't know the street in front of the trash company on the east side of the trash company? That's where it is, ma'am.
That's Alana Way?
I hardly ever go there either.
Where? I don't know where.
So, if you go up Tunnel Avenue?
Oh.
And you turn right on Beatty?
Right.
When you, and let's say you wanted to go north on one-on-one, when you make that left, that's Alana. And then, when it curves under the bridge.
I used to drive that every single day.
It's Alana Way.
Okay.
It's because the stop sign gets knocked down by all the trucks, that's why. The stop sign and the street sign gets knocked down all the time, yeah.
I'm just trying to avoid potholes over there, so that's all I pay attention to when I drive.
Alana is pretty rough right now. Beatty is still, is still good, but yeah, Alana's pretty rough.
All right.
That's a tire test.
Good to know.
Okay, any questions?
I have one for Randy.
Sure.
Randy, on page forty.
Forty, okay.
This is just a question from my own mind.
Sure.
Probably nobody else is interested, to be honest, but this is the sixteen-inch line. We replaced the eight-inch line last year, right?
That's correct. So, what we were, what we did actually last year was we had the eight-inch line, but we had put it in above ground. And last year, we put it in underground.
Right.
Yep, exactly correct.
So, we did replace it, though, I mean.
Right, and so, now, what there is, is from Valley Drive Lift Station to Bay Shore at Guadalupe, there's one eight-inch and one twelve-inch line that feed into that manhole. And then, they then, then they feed, when it comes out of the manhole, it becomes a sixteen-inch.
Right, jointly. So, is this one of those ones, it's like, when you're talking about replacing, is it a dig and replace? Or is it like crushing, or can you align it? Because they use a different material now than they do the concrete and stuff, right? So.
We haven't, we, the price we've designed it on is based on cut and cover.
Cut and cover.
We haven't looked, yeah, so that would be just digging it out and replacing the line, piece for piece.
But I know when we did the smaller sewer line.
Yeah, we pipe burst those. I don't think you can burst sixteen inches best, so that'd be too big. There are some sort of inflatable linings, they're cured-in-place things that you can use. But we just got an advisory that came out that is telling us not to use CIPP anymore, because one of the styrene it's used in it is potentially harmful. And even if it's for a sewage line, it sends bad things down into the sewage treatment plant that messes up the microorganisms that are in there, so.
Okay.
But I would have to tell you, it's indeterminate right now. We know we could cut and cover, replace it, but certainly, if we can come up with a lower-cost option, we'll do that.
Okay.
Sure.
Great, thanks.
We'll go down the line. Any questions from you, Madison?
I do, but I think I cut Terry off, and I think she was gonna ask them, so wait.
Before you get into your discussion, Stuart's got two projects he just wants to.
Oh, sure.
Ah, you two?
I two, Stuart?
You know, Randy had, you know, got to talk about five. I figure I should be able to talk about two.
Okay, you're allowed.
Thank you.
It's this one.
So, the first one I'd like to talk about is on page eighty-five, the all-weather volleyball court at Littman School. This is a project that I have talked to the City Council about previously. The, previously, on the CIP was a bathroom at the tennis courts. I had talked to the superintendent. The school district has money to be able to put in the bathroom, so they will be working on that project. But what they don't have money for is an all-weather court outside for Littman. And they would like to do that to, for their, for their gym program, but also for our after-school program that we're funding. So, this is gonna, would cost us about fifty thousand dollars. I thought it was a good deal to swap a hundred thousand dollar project for a fifty thousand dollar project. So, that one will be coming forward to you, and we will be asking you for money whenever the school district is ready to go forward with that.
What does all-weather mean? Does that mean it's indoors?
No, it'll be outdoors, but the surface will be able to deal with the rain.
So, it's like not slippery, is that what?
Yes. And Stuart, the reason that this, the school district's got the money is that those are from development. Yes. They've collected. Yes.
So, are we gonna ensure, though, that like if we put in the all-weather volleyball court, that they're gonna put in the bathroom?
Yes.
And can it be used for other things, other than volleyball?
It'll be, it'll be a court that could be used for other types of.
I guess like badminton.
Stuff like that, yes. I mean, it's, it's not gonna be able to be used for basketballs. You know, I mean, it'll be shaded too, so that way, you won't be out in the sun all the time. So, I mean, it's something that the superintendent's talked about and is very excited about and if he can help.
So, is this a covered?
It's not completely covered, but it will have awnings to shade.
Fun story, when I went to Littman, we all, we were super into volleyball at one point. Like, they'd, we, you know, kids go through phases. So, in my grade, we had like a very intense volleyball phase, like in the sixth grade. We, there was no way to play volleyball outside, so there was a fence that separated kinda the inner courtyard with the outer courtyard. So, all the boys would be on one side of the fence, all the girls would be on the other side of the fence. And we transform that into our volleyball net. But the fence is like a huge fence, probably like at least ten feet tall, if not more. So, we made a makeshift volleyball court outside when I was like in the sixth grade. So, definitely, yeah, there was no, like, you couldn't go up to the net or anything. But we, you know, we had to use what we had. So, I definitely think this would get a lot of use, for sure.
Would it include any lighting so that it could be used after hours?
I would have to ask the superintendent as to what his, what he's going to do. But when I bring, when we bring it back for funding and for.
You never know. Yeah, because it could be as popular as the basketball courts.
Right.
I would be a little bit more concerned about it.
hesitant about that, that being in the middle of nowhere.
It's behind the school?
It's behind the school. It would be where the portables are.
Okay.
So, having that be as popular as the basketball court would not be.
I'm kind of joking, but I just was wondering if there might be a.
From that perspective, I might say that we probably don't want lighting there.
But I mean, there could be the potential, like, if Park and Rec wanted to have a weekend sort of volleyball class, like we do tennis classes and things like that, could it be used?
Yes.
In that.
It said it would be open to the community during after-school hours.
Yes, well, it'd be open for our after-school program first, but yes, it would be available, just like any, all school district's facilities are available.
Cool.
The other one that I wanted to highlight is on page ninety-one. This is the modular addition, Brisbane Elementary School. We had talked about, this is another one I had talked about with the City Council, that we need to have, we need to replace the modular unit. This, for a while, we were in conversation with the school district to see if they would be, allow us to put a different modular on the school property. And we have agreement that they, we can. So, we're looking at putting a larger facility, because as, right now, our facility is at maximum and on days is over maximum. So, we try and switch people in and out of the modular. So, what this would be is a larger modular with also with a bathroom. And the bathroom would be very helpful, because right now, we're using the one in the school, which causes some problems when we're bringing our kids into the school and the school is still going. It also causes other problems during the summer when the school is trying to do some refurbishment, and we need to bring our kids into the school. So, if we can do this for our, you know, this will help us bring back our summer program up to BEES as well.
And it's kinda far away, like, if a kid has to go, you know, it's like kind of a walk.
Yeah, for a little.
Get them in there, and, you know.
So, this will be a project that we'll probably bring back to you in December, because it takes, it's gonna take that long for us to be able to have it installed.
Yeah, we proved it last year, in theory.
In theory, I mean, what it was is that you said, yes, you want us to do it. So, we went out and we were trying to get bids, we didn't get any bids, because the timeframe wasn't long enough. I think I brought it to you in April of last year. And what we, you know, and everybody was booked at that point. So, I just wanted to highlight this is coming back. And we'll be, this is Noreen's top priority to get this, so we can have it put in place over the summer.
And would it be located adjacent to the existing modular?
Well, actually, we'd take out the existing modular, and it would replace the existing modular and be an L shape. So, you'd have two, you'd have two separate rooms plus a bathroom. And what that would do is give us more ability to have different kinds of after-school activities as well.
And I'm assuming the bathroom would be hooked into the sewer line?
Um, that's what we're hoping.
Not being a modular?
No. It would not be, you know, we would, we will work with Public Works and.
So, how much?
It's not a pit, and it's, you know, dry, you know, type.
So, if it's going, if it would replace the existing modular, what, how many, what's the capacity of it?
This one, we are hoping to get at least seventy.
And the current one is how much?
Forty-nine.
What's current enrollment?
Sixty-five with a twelve person, ten-person waitlist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so Stuart, we're gonna eliminate that backspace that's currently between the module and the um.
Module.
In the in the fence?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is that's kind of where it would go.
All right.
Be L-shaped, right?
And and so um, I know a lot of people are disappointed that it didn't get built this past summer. So now we got plenty of time for sure it's gonna happen.
Noreen is working on it. She came back Monday and she's beginning to work on it. So we are do everything we can to make it happen this summer.
Okay, great. All right.
If if construction slows down, it would be better for us.
Yeah, and and with the all the construction that's gonna need to be going on in in other areas from the fire, it's might be very difficult to get public bids for very time-constrained projects.
Could be.
Um, I'm just wondering, on some of these projects, we have projected costs for two thousand sixteen. We didn't just apply a CPI uh, increase to those projects. We left them at the last known guesstimate.
Yes.
And would you anticipate some of these projects or what would you anticipate the percentage up cost for a two-year delay?
As we're gonna be looking at two thousand eighteen on some of these. Um, you know, right now we're running some probably right around three percent a year, but you know, it's gonna be one of those challenges um, that part of it's going to be due to what the construction market is at that time and how big of a project it is. And what else, you know, what else we're trying to do. I mean, if, you know, as we try and get some projects um, stacked back to back, that helps the bids. Whereas if you're trying to get something that is a project that is a time-consuming project, that's a one-off, it's harder. I mean, that's one of the reasons we did uh, you know, more of the skateboard park at one time. It's more reason we did the the playground as opposed to being in phases. We did it as one as a one thing. Because as you can put projects together and you can have your construction mobilized in the same place, you save money. So I mean, there there will there probably will be increases and, you know, and the prob- you know, and the question is, is, you know, just not knowing what the market's going to be. We do not want to just inflate it. We wanted to make sure that when we brought it back, we had a better number for you.
So so Stuart, I mean, you know, I think that this is a project definitely the council would like to move forward with. The community expressed interest that we expand the site so that we accommodate, so we don't have to have kids on the waiting list. Um, what's keeping us from just like putting it out the bid now and getting a contractor secured so that we can do this project when school gets out?
Staffing issues.
Our staffing issues.
Yeah, I mean, Noreen was out for three months. She's.
Okay, I know, but but in like Clark has said, we've already kind of agreed to to move this forward. So this was last year. I mean, the last thing we've wanted here is council members like, hey, you said you were gonna do this and now, sorry, we 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 hear the circumstances and we couldn't do it.
Right. We put it out. We we went out and we shopped the market in April. What they had told us at that time was that they cannot put it in that quickly. Um, and you know, we needed to do it over the summer, so we we're going to put it out. We're gonna shop the market again when it's a, you know, given the the right amount of lead time that we were told. So that way we do it over the summer because we can't do it during the school year.
I I I get that.
So we.
So is it too? So like maybe what I'm getting at Stuart is is it just too early right now to put it out the bid for a project that would be built in the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
So why would it have to be done during the summer? Because it seems like rec is utilized a lot during the summer as well.
Right, but during the summer, we're able to use Mission Blue for a camp.
Oh, I see.
During the school year, we need to use the modular. Otherwise, we would need to bring sixty-five children someplace else.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So those are my only two projects.
Okay.
On Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Are there any other council questions?
I I look through all these projects and, you know, some I think are good projects, some I think are not so good projects, but they're all gonna be coming back to us and we can discuss those in detail as whether we wanna put them into one year's budget or the other. So I really don't have individual questions until they come back to us.
Sure. And and as I said, um, upfront, you you will see them these all these projects at least two more times. One, when the plans and specs are brought forward and the second is when you go or award a bid. So you you have two more touches on on all these.
Okay.
But what I would say tonight that's important is that as as we've indicated, the the general fund projects are are really not funded, okay? So if there's something it's listed as general fund that you would like to see funded, and I think Stuart just spoke to that, with his Parks and Rec projects, the it would be helpful for you to identify that.
Okay.
Tonight or at some future point in time. We would not be bringing forward general fund capital projects unless we get direction from the council to do so.
Got it. Okay, before we get to that point, I wanna get through questions, though. So you don't have any other questions?
No.
Cliff?
I don't. I have a bunch here and I'd like to actually go last because since I have quite a few and I, you know, maybe, you know, other council members will ask them and then I can just take it off my list.
I have I have two general fund projects that I would like.
Yeah, well, no, no, we're still on questions.
Okay.
Questions? Cause I have some questions.
I got questions.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I see what I did is I did opposite. Like I found all the ones I didn't like instead of finding all the ones that I did. But we can get into that in discussion. I just had question like I just needed some more clarification because some of them are super vague. So what is the small boathouse? Page eighty-two.
So the small boathouse would be something that we would recommend for construction at the marina after we put a hand-launch facility in at the south shoreline. And a hand-launch facility would be something where you'd come off of the existing riprap and you'd be able to bring down a kayak, a stand-up paddleboard or one of those small sailboats that people learn to to sail in like a laser. And the point of having the boathouse would be a place where those things could be stored.
So like you'd rent a like slips there to people or?
Exactly. Yeah, we used to we used to have something that was. Well, it it was very, very low effort that that it was just a couple of timbers that had been put up. It was racks. We let people s- throw their stuff up on it. There wasn't uh, wasn't anything to be proud of.
Okay.
So that doesn't exist anymore.
Didn't we apply for some grants several years?
We did. We appr- applied for a grant from the Division of Building and Waterways for the uh, for the hand-launch facility and it was we just ate up too much of the money, so they couldn't. It was a six hundred thousand dollar project, so they they just couldn't fund it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, page eighty-six, bocce ball courts. Is this going behind the bathrooms? Where is this going?
Um, if you remember, I think this was discussed during your time on Parks and Recreation Commission, I think.
Hmm.
And it was there. The problem was trying to find the right spot for it.
I know we like tossed it around lightly.
Well, there is.
The idea, toss the idea of the bocce ball court.
Right. So one of the question, one of the spots that that has been looked at is um, next to Old County in front of the gate, which was not a good idea. And I think the commission said no. So I think they're still trying to work through where the best spot is behind the behind the bathrooms may be a spot. But it's just trying to find a good spot as well as is, you know, forty thousand dollars for a bocce ball court a high priority for them? And at this point, it is not. There's higher priorities that they do have. Such as you said, the lighting at the dog park, the lighting on the quarry road, um, the all-weather volleyball court, the um, the modular.
Yeah.
The marquee sign at Mission Blue. So they have not really spent a lot of time. I think you're right. They tossed they talked about it when you were on it, and I don't think they've really spent much more time trying to figure out because it's not their high priority.
Well, also, you really need to figure out like how you're gonna make sure the balls don't get stolen.
Well, I think what you do is you allow people, you create the court and other people bring their equipment, just like you do for a soccer field or a basketball court.
Okay.
Huh. Was there any public um?
Well, this was raised by somebody at the marina.
Any request for them?
Years ago.
Well, somebody at the marina years ago offered to do it for free.
I know, but.
But was there any community need identified?
Um, I think it came out of the.
Build it and they will come.
Right. I think that's where it came from. It was it was raised as a potential at the marina. There was no good spot there that was determined and so it was just kind of carried over.
Too sad.
The guy the guy at the marina was gonna pay for it.
Yep.
And then that got kind of poo-pooed, I think, by by citizens and, you know, so.
Is that guy still around?
Pay for the one and.
Right. Indeed, he did. Yeah, that that happened and all of a sudden, a lot of regulatory requirements came in and he said, no, thank you. I'm not I wasn't down for that. So.
Is that guy still around, Randy?
I he probably still has a bad taste in his mouth. Sorry, he's around.
Oh, man. I like it when people offer to pay for things. So we don't have to, you know, like take people up on that.
Yeah.
I mean, there there hasn't been an outcry for bocce ball in this town. So I mean, it this is it's a low priority for the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's on the list.
Okay.
I I I would not expect that you will see that anytime in the near future coming to be funded.
You got a hankering for bocce. You're welcome to come over to my house.
Hey, if that guy was so willing to to build one out in the marina, I think we should reach out to him and I'd I'd like to see it out there.
Well, I think there was issues with putting it out in the marina.
We should have talked about this with the senior home uh, on San Bruno because it's probably the seniors that are gonna be using it potentially.
Yeah, bocce ball's fun.
I love it. It's great. Okay.
Okay.
So page eighty-eight. I'm not I don't wanna get too deep into this, but I'm just I'm not a fan. So it's not really a question, but I'm just going through my pages that going through my.
Yeah, this is the um, electronic sign boards.
Yeah.
At Mini Park in the Mission Blue. So this would be changing over the existing sign boards, which are printed out and used to be handwritten um, to electronic.
Yes.
Um, was there any community input that made the suggestion? How did this come about?
I think it came about at the Parks and Recreation Commission as a conversation as to um, how to provide better information to the public.
Can we?
Right now, those signs can only be one-off and a lot of times uh, there are signs that are taken down early from instructors or from other issues because we have a death in the community. So signs don't run their full course, whereas if you had an electronic sign board, you would be able to put up multiple signs throughout, you know, throughout the day.
And it could be viewed at night.
And it could be viewed easier at night.
But I I see what you're saying. I I kinda like the feel.
You know, have we ever thought about doing those ones that like, you know, sometimes you see like diners on the side of the road and they have the ones where you can just put in the letters? You just slide the letters in instead of like printing out.
Mm-hmm.
Paper? Have we ever looked like that could still save money, but it's still more of the.
Like bingo.
The rustic hometown feel?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean.
Council's gotta do it.
Well, originally, they were hand-painted and then uh, it went to the printer type.
Right.
And uh, I know the council, another council had addressed this ten years ago and they said no to the electronic signs and kinda sounds like it's still the same sentiment.
It looks like.
I don't wanna drive around the curve and see.
Well, also, you might be waiting for the next one to pop up, you know, it's like.
And you rear in some.
I think they're distracting. I I'm against the electronic signs personally, but.
It's the council's prerogative to remove any of these items you wish from the list.
Well, or fund the ones we do want.
I'm just stating I don't like that one. Okay, so.
Leave it.
Leave it for another council.
Not a fan. Okay, eighty-nine. Can we talk about where is this going? Is this just?
Full-size soccer field.
Construction. It's not refurbishing.
No, we do not know. This is something that's been on the list since two thousand and one.
It sounds like Ken Walker putting that one in.
Absolutely. It does have a Ken Walker feel because that was about the time that it was put on.
When he was on the Park and Rec.
And as you know, we have not brought it forward.
So, okay, so we have no idea where this would be going?
No, I mean, this would be one of those projects. I think it was talked about at when the quarry.
Okay.
When the quarry development was being discussed, that would be a potential for this. You know, another potential might be if with the Baylands builds, that might be a place. I mean, you're gonna need a large field, a large-sized park. So it was it's on the list because there is, we do not have a full-size soccer field in town.
So this is something we could use, like, let's say, park side, a developer comes, wants to build more units. We can say if we have a site, I don't know.
We do not have this. I I would I would be hard pressed to tell you where you would put a full-size soccer field on land that the city already owns.
Well, that's what I was wondering because it really threw me for a loop. I didn't know where.
I mean, there's there's a number of projects that are on this list that are not, you know, we do not have the ability to do.
No identification.
You why why is the funding source general fund? How come not developer?
Because there is no there's no connection to a developer per se as it's not an infrastructure that's going to be required for a developer to build their development. It could be something that you do out of a development agreement, but that is not how we interpreted the word developer funding at this point. It's for infrastructure that needs that will need to be built by the developer in order to make the development happen.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because anything on this list could be funded by.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, when you look at this, it would either be the quarry site, you know, part of their thing or uh, ball fields out at uh.
Correct.
To Baylands. There really isn't any other place.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's kind of going along with, I guess, page ninety-three. Is same same thing with this one?
Yes, so this one is even older. An older project on the list. This probably came back from nineteen nineteen ninety-nine, maybe even earlier than that. So this was when the uh, northeast ridge was built. There is a parcel of land that's on the northeast ridge that the city u- owns that at one point in time could have been used for a gymnasium.
Is this next to the ball?
Mission Blue.
No, Mission Blue is actually a different site. This is more at the corner where.
The parking lot.
Where the parking lot is.
End of the ball field.
But I mean, part of part of the challenge with building a gymnasium is staffing a gymnasium. Um, you know.
Staff it for sixty thousand.
Well, this was just.
No, this is a.
Okay, yeah.
But let me let me fill in some gaps here because uh, there was actually money that we had set aside from the northeast ridge, like one point eight million dollars. We talked about possibly building a gymnasium there.
Right, and I think we're using a portion of that for the.
And now we're using it at a library.
Yeah.
It diverted. Said what's more useful.
Absolutely.
You know.
So then could we put a gymnasium where the existing that would may not that might be that big where the existing library is?
No, that would not be big enough. What you'd want is a full-size basketball court. You'd want, you know, workout rooms. I mean, we're talking about a full, you know, when this was discussed, it was discussed as a full-size. And then there's uh, restrictions over the land at the gym at the library, as we found out when we were redoing the park in the back of the library, that there's deed restrictions as to what what can happen on that site.
Okay.
But I I would say from a finance director's perspective, um, even if you were able to find, I mean, this is just to develop plans, you're probably going to be talking millions of dollars to develop the gym and then hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to staff the gym.
It's like pie in the sky.
This would be like maybe in connection with.
It's another wishful thinking, you know.
You'd need other space.
Remind us all that there was a point in time when the library was a pie in the sky project.
Yes, it was.
And it's gonna be taking fifteen years' worth of business tax to pay for it.
Right. I mean, it but.
That's not pie in the sky, though. We identified how to fund it and and we're moving forward with it.
When it becomes a priority of the council and the community, I mean, we can bring our resources to try to figure out a way to do it.
It was community-driven too, you know, and so, I mean, there was a all all things aligned, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I mean, uh, these are a lot of these things here are are wishful thinking. If I had the money and we could do it, even the pool was. Pool was thirty-five-year broken promise, thirty years. I mean, you know, every person that ran for city council, we're gonna build a pool. Yeah, you are. I heard it over and over.
And then during the recession, we wondered if we had to close the pool.
Yeah, I mean, those are one of the things because that's a, you know, a hole in the water. We know that. You know, building it.
A hole hole in the ground that you pour that you pour money in. That is what a pool is.
That's it.
The definition of a pool.
Yeah.
Or a boat. Well, that's not in the ground at least. You're just pouring money money right into the into the ocean. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Madison, keep going. You're asking half of my question.
Great.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Okay, my last one is ninety-seven. I'm wondering like, how big would this park be? Is this kind of like where um, I feel like there's this like area that you can walk and there's things stored over. Didn't you? You and I went back there one time.
Yeah, I wanna know if this is the.
Oh, this is that area like that is like so grassy and beautiful, but then Cliff and I went back there and there was like all this storage happening and like uh, like some barrels and anyway. I don't know if that's a good enough descriptor. There was a fence put up.
I would actually have to try and ask people because it's not something that the Parks and Recreation and this has been on the Parks and Recreation Commission's list for a long time. And it hasn't been anything that we've discussed, but I have to go and do researches to see exactly where the original plan was.
Does anyone know what I'm talking about, though? Is that city property?
Yeah, it like forks off. Like you walk down and you think you're on the trail and then you realize, no, it's to the left.
So.
At the back end of the Crocker Park trail.
Are you talking about the South Hill would be the piece of property we would sell on South Hill to create a West Hill Mini Park? Is that what this?
I wasn't talking and this has been on the list well well before.
Because it says fu- source of funding, South Hill Land Sale.
Yes, that would be a potential source of funding because it would be a park along the trail was the thought. But the other one is general fund.
You know where the curve is, right?
Yes, I've been on the I've been on it.
That's what you're talking about, right?
So the so the answer to council member Davis's question is that is the facility you leased to a dog trainer.
That's right. I I seem to have dogs.
Tell her who's doing the training out at Sierra Point, Sherdeuce Parking.
Okay, I was really wondering. There were kennels, and I think, and I was like, what is this?
I didn't know we leased land to a dog trainer.
We didn't.
Surprise. Okay.
We certainly did, ma'am.
We did, or we do?
We did. The council approved it.
No more? Still there?
Still do, sure. He's still there. It's only been a few years.
Is there like a camper there? Because I was like wondering if somebody was living there.
No, there's nobody living.
When was that?
I don't remember.
Cliff and I were like, oh my gosh, is someone going to pop out?
I would have, you sure that came to council?
I don't believe it did.
I don't think it did. If I was, it was after midnight, and I don't remember it.
There's one of those no eating before-
I must have been here after midnight, then, and did it by myself. Randy and I got together after midnight.
Show us the staff report. How's that? I'd like to see the staff report on that.
I've seen things on Facebook about people asking what's going on and why is there stuff up here, but I've never known.
I'm glad we got to the bottom of that. Cliff and I were like taking pictures, and we're like, what's happening? We had no idea. Anyway, I digress. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. So coming back to Cliff.
I, like I said, I got quite a few, so I'd, well-
Well, we're back to you and then me.
Oh, Clark.
Clark, did you have questions?
He's going to present a couple of things.
No, he had ideas.
I got ideas.
Oh, okay. Are you done?
Well, I go last.
Well, you know, just because, yeah, I'll go last, and I can, hopefully I only have like two after you're finished.
Thank you, sure. Madison covered quite a bit of mine, so. I had a question on page nine, ninety, yes. Marquee sign at Mission Blue Center, an electronic marquee-
So out of curiosity, why does everybody have questions on Parks and Recreation projects? Randy has seventy-five. I had ten.
Yours is a controversial one.
So I-
You didn't say you loved all your projects, that's why.
That was my problem.
So what do you mean by an electronic marquee sign? Because I do recall several years ago, Ray Miller had said we needed better signage for Mission Blue Center, and I think there was something placed there, but it's not electronic, and it's quite small.
So this is something that the Parks and Recreation Commission has talked about a number of times, where they would like a sign that is large, where people, where you can, it'll be electronic, and where you would be able to say, tonight, the, you know, wedding, you know, Joe and Lori's wedding. Or tonight, you have this party, or tonight, you have live at Mission Blue.
I see.
Like on like the side of a theater, like that type of?
Like a freestanding marquee sign, where that would be electronic.
I understand, you know, a lot of the events at Mission Blue Center are at night, so you need to be able to see it at night, which I guess is where the electronic part is coming up. But I'm wondering if there's a way to have a sign that has lighting, so that it just isn't looking like an electronic sign.
I think-
I don't like the idea of the electronic.
I think it really takes away, that would take away from the ambiance of the mountain and the dark sky that we are trying to achieve up there. And I would certainly have to see what it would look like, but don't think it's-
I agree. The idea, like, on its face seems inconsistent with the character of the city to have something electronic out there. But, you know, I think whatever goes out there would have to certainly be vetted by the community and the council.
Way low lighting.
Right, anything that would be put out there would be a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission to the city council. So both Parks and Recreation Commission would see it, as would the city council, before anything moved forward.
And you have more signage out there, I think.
Or like, yeah, I'm not really a fan, so I would like to see non-electronic options.
But something that does draw, it's a very small sign that's-
I mean, but I think it's one thing to say, here's Mission Blue Center. Another thing to say, there's a baby shower going on today? You know, this is like not always necessary to have all of these announcements. You know, just where it is.
You know, I seem to recall that it was Kevin Fryer that came before the council.
Yes.
And so, you know, Kevin's got his live at Mission Blue. Like to have a sign that says, live at Mission Blue, whatever, you know? And so, for me, you know, if the Park and Rec Commission brought forth different examples that were not intrusive, you know, that were tasteful, but highlighted what's going on at the Mission Blue Center, then maybe we could have a discussion about it and see, yeah, okay, that's not so bad.
Or it's only for particular, particular events.
You know, whatever, you know, I mean, we don't have to, you know, Park and Rec can explore different options, and we can say, yeah, you know, thank you for sharing, but we're not really interested.
Again, this is not an item that, you know, Parks and Recreation has brought forward as one of their high priorities. I mean, the two highest priorities at this point in time is the well-weather volleyball court.
And the lodge.
Okay.
Yeah, no, for sure. That was something that they had brought forth a while back.
They did.
Right, okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm just saying, wondering, what kind of dollar figure does staff anticipate that general fund in this next fiscal year would be able to accommodate for projects so that we don't need to worry about, you know, saying yay or nay to, or how we feel about certain projects? If they're not even going to be budgetarily possible?
I think at this point in time, we would be looking to see if there was, if projects were a high priority, that we would probably be using fund balance to pay for them.
And what kind of reserves and fund balance would we be able to do fiscally?
And I would have to go back and do, and look at that. I mean, and still beat the city council's reserve policy. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking there might be two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand available, but then I would want to also do the five-year projections to see, you know, because there's a number of issues that, you know, that we're facing financially, as council knows. You know, Purcell Murray moved out of town. So whereas I was thinking Stell and Dot was going to be in addition to the budget, Stell and Dot will replace Purcell Murray. There may be other issues by, other businesses that are not going to be producing the revenues that we thought they were going to at the beginning of the fiscal year. And those might be, you know, might take more than a year to work their way through. So that will be one of the conversations that the city council may want to have, is do we dip into reserves to cover, you know, some of those one-time decreases, like that, which, as we said, was part of what the reserve was there for. But, I mean, I think that will be a longer conversation when I bring back the five-year plan, you know, as we go through the budget process. But at this point in time, I do not see any, the general fund does not have any ongoing revenues that exceed ongoing expenses.
So basically, that figure, that two hundred thousand to maybe, what, five hundred thousand, basically is enough to cover maybe the all-weather volleyball court and the-
Modular.
Modular.
Okay.
Right? It's not really room for much else. Those are the two we're going to prioritize.
Yeah, okay. So let's just get through the questions, then. So page ninety-two, quarry road lighting. So is the idea there that the lighting would extend all the way to the entrance of the quarry? Or just to the, where the road starts?
Just where the road is, because there, this has been an issue that has, that was brought up again in the Parks and Recreation Commission, where people use, would like to be able to use that at night, and there are people who feel uncomfortable walking along dark paths at night.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a priority for me.
Me too.
And I'd like to, you know, have it come back before the council, and then evaluate, as you're saying, you know, do we have the funding? We also know that Stewart, you like sandbags.
I thought we weren't going to talk about that yet. I'm here jumping out, man.
I didn't know that we decided not to say that.
You can make minor comments.
Yeah, just questions.
All right, no, it's all good. I didn't know, sorry.
Okay.
It's all good.
Okay, and those are all my questions, and now it's Cliff.
Let's see. Okay, so on page three, you know, the expansion of the community garden. So there was a couple of proposals for expanding the community garden. One was a suggestion that was brought up by Madison and Terry during Parkside. Another one was brought up by the mayor in regards to perhaps doing some kind of community garden on the other side of Bay Shore. Thank you, Barbara. Right, so was that part of this type of analysis?
We, this was brought forward in discussions with the Open Space and Ecology Committee, and we looked at a couple of sites. We looked at the existing railroad spur off of South Hill Drive at first, and then determined that the creosote and the materials left from the railroad were not suitable-
I got veggies.
Putting plants on, right? So then we looked at just expansion where the, where the community garden exists. So we could expand a bit to the north with the, I guess it's the north, towards Solano with a little bit of terracing, and a bit to the other direction, and to the east, and double the size at that cost. We did not consider the other sites. We're looking for a quiet, you know, it was a positive idea to put something out closer to the northeast ridge where other people could use it, but we wanted a quiet site, not on a busy street. So we did not consider the other sites that you guys talked about.
Okay. Okay, so like these questions, so we're going to, we're going to come back to it and say, yeah, we want to give council direction, I mean, staff direction on these things? Okay. On page four, you know, the railing for the stairway between Mono and Sierra Point. You know, that's just for the, I guess, it's all the handrail. But there's, you know, that pathway is pretty, pretty beat up. There's also, it's narrow in certain places. There's like this vegetation that, the bamboo keeps encroaching into that space, so. I guess we would incorporate involving all those things, not just the handrail?
That cost is just the handrails, sir.
Yeah, okay. I know that we're, you know, trying to secure some funds for lighting of the Crocker Park Trail. And Karen, we talked about, you know, stubbing out that trail for lighting. So if we receive the funds, you know, knock on wood, you know, that we're going to get the seven hundred and whatever, seven hundred seventy-five thousand from MTC. And I hope maybe if you have an update, or when you thought that those funds would be available, to apply the stub out, what would be the additional cost associated with, you know, making that trail?
So I think what you're talking about, what you're saying is that we'd been funded to resurface the trail at eight hundred eighty-five thousand.
As eight eighty-five, sorry.
And MTC still has to fund, do their process, their board process to fund, and then the project has to go into the FMS system that tracks it for the state. And then we can have a field review with Caltrans, and then we can apply to actually get the money and start doing work. So they've kind of slowed their process down. They expected to do the MTC part by now, and they haven't yet, so they're delayed a few months. We were talking about with that estimate whether, if there was money, we would stub out for lighting, but we'd also applied for additional funds through TDA Article Three to do bollard lighting on the Crocker Trail. And that CCGB PAC committee is actually meeting tonight and talking about the projects and which ones they're deciding the funds. So we're waiting to hear whether we'd be funded to install lighting also.
All right. And what was the, was that the six hundred dollars for lighting?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand?
Yes. It's because it's two point three miles, you need to run conduit, pretty big conduit.
Is there staff, is any staff at that meeting tonight to advocate for the lighting?
No, this is their internal, so we did a presentation last month. This is their internal review of the project.
And just be aware, there's not a lot of money in that grant, and we applied for three projects, and there's, I don't know, like three or four times the amount requested than what's available from all the cities in Samhain County. Yeah, so I don't know, that one, probably a long shot.
We need you to get up at a meeting again and just advocate for us like you do best.
Well, you know, I think one of the projects that we do have a shot, and it's in here, I don't know what number it is, and that's the stairway from San Benito down to Alvarado, and that one's a smaller amount, a couple hundred thousand dollars. I know we'll talk about it later.
Sure.
Yeah. You know, on page eighteen, you know, so I got a question for you, Randy. So, and this is the pipeline along Valley Drive from Cypress Lane to Bankers Lane.
Page?
Page eighteen.
Eighteen.
So if we had flooding there in the past, and, yeah.
So we haven't had flooding, well, that's not true. We did have flooding about the same time we flooded City Hall here when your car nearly floated away before we did the remodel. So what happens is when we get, there's a funny story about staff members carrying Karen out to her car in their rubber boots, so she could still drive the car.
Before Facebook.
It was before Facebook. It was a long time ago. It was the way we, it was the way we used to do things. We still work as a team. But, so yes, we do, and the challenge we get is that when you have the king tides, and you get heavy rains, and you get heavy offshore winds, it pushes it back. We just don't have enough capacity in there.
Okay, and it says funding source developer. I mean, so is it, is there, are there any funding mechanisms where the properties in the industrial park can, like the Landscape and Lighting District out at Sierra Point, where they all kick in some money to do something that benefits all of them?
Well, the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscape District is very specific as to what you can ask people, what you can assess people for, so it is just specifically to lighting and landscape, and this one, unfortunately, it goes through private property in a, in a public easement, but, so it's kind of hard to tie it to the adjoining properties. It's not really the flow from that adjoining property. It's the combined flow from all of Brisbane, because it's down so low is the problem we run into, right? Because that's the low point. That's where it starts to stack up the most. It's everybody on the hills that's contributing to it.
Got it. Okay.
Cliff, may I pick it up on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Randy, can we add to that project, if we open that up, that's going down Valley Drive, what you're talking about from Cypress Lane, right? That if we get the funding for that, to be able to do that, to also add a future conduit for?
Fiber optic? I'm doing mind reading right now, sir.
Yeah, I know you can read it. We've talked about this, so.
Yeah, I think that's a grand idea. I think one of those things, we probably need to sit down and talk about what our vision would be for a fiber optic master plan, but there's no reason when we're installing major projects like this, we can't install a couple of blank conduits and leave them there.
Yeah.
Futures, yeah.
Smart. You know, some of these requests are for master plans, Randy, and, you know, we did our Parkside Precise Plan, and we had to put up a certain amount of money. Now, you know, the county is providing funding for things like precise plans. Are there options with any of these master plans of getting funding from various agencies to cover them?
So you don't, for the water and sewer ones, you typically do not see any sorts of grants. About the only thing I've seen is that some small communities can go to the state revolving fund, but that's really just a loan. And they're, you know, the rates aren't really that exciting for us to go after, so that's why we haven't pursued it.
Really? Okay. You know, on thirty-eight, the V ditches. Is it possible to create more natural conditions to direct the flow of water than these cement V ditches, Randy?
Well, I think there is, and I think that's kind of what we've done, actually, oddly enough, and it's one of the reasons we haven't- It's, and it's one of the reasons we haven't, you know, attacked this quite so much. They need some thinning out, but, so we got, you, you got two challenges there. You're trying to keep the water within the conveyance channel that you want it to be in, just so it doesn't become a, by nature, it'll become a nuisance, right? Rivers tend to meander. That's, that's what our natural rivers look like, and, you know, of course, we're humans, so we're trying to control our environment all the time, and we wanna keep it in a straight path so that adjoining parcels can develop, whether they're public parcels or private parcels. So you get that. But one of the things that we've started to discover is that by allowing some of that vegetation to take hold, it actually serves two purposes. It kind of slows down the flow, and it's a natural filter. So it, it, it requires some cleaning. We have to go through and pick up the litter. And you see that, um, actually, this is one of the places where you see it. At the end of West Hill Place, we've got that, we've got that channel that's just to the north of West Hill Place, that eventually comes over and cuts across West Hill Drive, and then comes down across and crosses over Valley. And where the detention basin was put, where we allowed some stuff to build up in, put some channels in it, it, the water comes out kind of clean. It's nice, it's a good thing. So, we're struggling with that balance. We're struggling with the balance of how do you, how do you control it, contain it, but then allow nature to still kind of do its thing and work our way through that?
Okay. On, on page fifty-one, the, um, that pedestrian pathway from Humboldt to Kings Road.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, you know, fairly, fairly narrow, um, but is, you think still feasible that, um, we could put something through there?
Absolutely. It's definitely feasible. I mean, if you were to ask me which paths are gonna get the most use, I wouldn't, I wouldn't start with this one. I'd think I'd start with the San Benito one.
Yeah.
I think, uh, you've got another more expensive one, that's kind of the Santa Clara-Alvarado-Tolari one. Um, I think those are the uses that you see. Just because you see people using them now, you know, the one at San Benito, that's the one that I would really, if you were to ask me, I would just say, well, the public's telling you that's the one they wanna use, cause look at their footprints. That's where they've been.
Yeah, I saw some kid run across the street and then go-
Just run up like a little mountain goat, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe that's what we ought to work on.
Okay.
I mean, that's, and that's, it's, it's funny, but it's, it's, at one point in time, that was, that there was a theory about how you design big campuses and universities, and like, well, you know, we put the buildings in and the engineers are gonna come out, and we're gonna put in the best paths and that's what people will use. And then they found that all these paths were just being cut, cause people were smarter about where they wanted to go than the engineers and the architects were. So, there were a couple of experiments where they said, you know what, we're gonna build the buildings, and we're just put grass out there, and then we're gonna see where the footpaths take us. And then look at putting the paths in from there and kind of going with the flow.
Yeah, yeah.
Went through that conversation on building the park.
Yeah.
Also, you know, back, back in the, uh, early nineties, about how to, uh, design the pathways. And, and that's kind of how our road system is built in the United States, by pathways.
Yeah, that was an old, uh-
Well, like, you know, certainly where I grew up, it's very much like that. That's, you know, back in New England, it was a path from town to town and how far you could travel on foot in a day and, you know, that, yeah.
Yeah, no, for sure. It, it, Randy, is there, um, from Kings up to, to Margaret, is there also an easement as well, or would the trail, or that alleyway end at Kings Road?
Well, I think it ends at Kings, sir. I'm not aware of one that, that takes you up to Margaret. Because Margaret and, Margaret and Paul are of course private, so I, I don't know that we've got an easement that extends up there.
Okay. Yeah, the turf renovation, so on page ninety-four and ninety-five, wha- what are the conditions of, of those, um, those two, uh, fields?
Gets back to Stuart.
Yeah.
Um, you know, those fields have problems during rainstorms of not really draining well. As you know, during your days of coaching soccer, it comes from the same idea of having a full-size soccer, I mean, the same group of people, who wanted to have fields that were more usable during the rainy season. Um, the fields themselves, I mean, they're, they're, you know, the grass is still okay, but just trying to, you know, put a soccer field on the, on Lippman during the rainy season becomes a challenge, cause there's parts that are just pure mud.
Yeah.
And so that's where this comes from. You know, originally, it was talking about potentially creating, um, artificial turf there, and Parks and Recreation Commission said they really didn't like artificial turf. So it was more of trying to get the right kind, you know, working through getting the right drainage to have it drain better.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So why, why is it that Mission Blue seems to be like that, is just that, that field doesn't get as much use? Or when, why would you say that that one seems to be, just seems to have the least amount of problems?
Part of it is that it gets the least use. Part of, probably, and this is probably more for Randy to know than I do, but it was also built in two, you know, in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, at a time when, you know, they did a better job dealing with the drainage than when Lippman's fields were built and when BES fields were built.
Okay.
So it's probably a higher level of knowledge on how to get the drainage right.
I think that's right. That's why you'll see out at Mission Blue, oftentimes, the, the right and the left field file lines will get wet, because the, the water is, has been directed and trained to run over there, so it stays a little wetter there, whereas particularly like BES lower, it gets wet and it gets some seep, it gets some bleed off from the mountain in particular, so it's a real challenge to manage the irrigation system. We, we've, we've played with the zone so many times, cause the piece of it near San Bruno needs more water, cause the mountain water doesn't seep over there, and it, we, we chase it back and forth.
Okay.
And then a last question. Um, you know, so I was canvassing on Anis and Herald, um, over the weekend, and so I, I didn't know that they had paved the road that was very nice to drive on. Um, right? And, and so, they, some of the folks were concerned about, you know, they put this money in to make it nice finally, and then they're gonna be doing this project. So if you could just kind of talk about that, how they're expecting it to be just as nice as it is today after the work is finished that we're gonna be doing there?
We will certainly replace-
We will certainly replace the paved section of the street with the existing paved section that was there.
Okay.
On, on Herald Road, where?
On Herald, yes.
And what were they expecting?
Well, they just, uh, paved, uh, yeah, so if you're on the road, it's, it's paved.
That's great.
Yeah.
Uh, is, I recall what happened is the road washed out.
It looks nice.
Yeah, out by the curve, right?
Right.
I'll pass the big curve, right, and it's just, it's probably a couple hundred feet before that is where they started the paving.
Right.
So you, you come through that narrow point, there's one house that encroaches really close down to the roadway, it's got a big rock wall.
And so the city had done something to, with the property owners, to where that was gonna be repaired, and the property owners would pay for that because it was a private road, right?
And that was before my time, but that's my understanding of what happened there as well, yes.
That was in the nineties, and so I don't recall anything about paving being part of that, I, you know-
No, what, this is recent. This is within like the last year they did it. Yeah, the private, the private adjoining property owners paved it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't do it, no. We didn't, we don't pave private roads.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're done with questions. Um, I'm wondering if we should take a break before we get into discussion?
Sure.
Ma- Mayor, uh, maybe just before you do that, I, I've got a suggestion for you in terms of how you look at the general fund projects, cause I know there's some desire to fund some of those. So maybe tonight, you can just identify those projects that you would like to see move forward, and then we can bring that back in the context of your five-year fiscal model. Um, and then you can see how, what the impacts are and just how comfortable you are in terms of funding. So we don't have to get into that issue tonight. You can just identify those that you are, are priorities to use and afford.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll take a five-minute break.